As we go ahead and get started, number one on our work session today is discussion of the addition to the NeoGov platform.
A version of this was in y'all's packet, but then today I found a few small typos. So I've given you a revised version of the presentation. So with that, we'll get started. Just a quick review. In December of 2023, council approved the subscription for NeoGov as an applicant tracking system, which is kind of the foundation for the software. So with the FY 2026 budget, we're requesting to add an extension to that platform, which is, they call it LEARN. It is their learning management system. So just wanted to go over some of those details with y'all this afternoon prior to moving forward with any signatures. Let's see. So one of the most important things for our department is just making sure that we're able to support the city's core values. Number one, safety, compliance, and professional development. So this is one of the ways that we are going to try and do that. A lot of time, often our time and our resources are limited here in the public sector, you know, not being able to have instructors on call. And so using a learning management system would be a really great and efficient way to provide training to our employees on a more efficient basis and hopefully a more convenient basis for them as well. Also, the majority of it is going to cover a lot of our safety requirement trainings and kind of more of the basic information, not really industry-specific when you're talking about like gas or law enforcement, but some of our kind of basic safety training. So by putting this online, we're going to be able to work with the departments and their schedules more easily as opposed to asking them to come in and sit in the auditorium at the civic center for a couple of hours every year. Some of the challenges, just to kind of bring y'all into the loop, the paper processes, a lot of it is scheduling on paper or spreadsheets, tracking paper rosters, and a lot of that can actually lead to clerical errors, possibly being deemed for noncompliance during an audit. And so if we're able to track all of that online, then we're able to have more accurate data and know where we are and where our gaps are. Let's see. A couple of the critical needs that we have here at the city, online training. We've got well over 500 employees. I'm not even sure what the number is now that the budget's passed, but being able to provide training for all of those employees and make sure that we're doing it year after year after year is becoming more challenging. So having an online platform is going to make that a little bit more convenient for our employees and for their supervisors. This particular extension part of NeoGov is smartphone-friendly, but in addition to that, we've got kiosks set up throughout the city for employees to access if they have trouble with their smartphone or if they just, you know, aren't very good at using it online. It's got all the kiosks have headphones and tools that they're going to need to complete the training. The other, you know, challenge that we have when we're talking about compliance training is especially with over 500 employees, getting everybody in to do something as simple as drug and alcohol training. Over the summer, we were able to push through over 450 employees in the span of two days to get their drug and alcohol training completed, but that was pretty challenging. They had to stop what they were doing, adjust their work schedules, and they're moving and shaking pretty quickly. So hopefully by doing it online, we're able to give them more flexibility in completing those training requirements. In addition, LEARN would have automated enrollment. So what that would mean is as soon as someone is quote-unquote "hired" in the applicant tracking side of the system, it would automatically trigger certain training requirements. So that could be something as simple as just your new hire compliance training, or it could be more elevated if you're promoting somebody to a supervisor. Well, then we've designed a course or a course track that has new supervisor training so that we're making sure that they're successful in their new position. So it would basically automatically put them in those training courses. Also, track renewal dates. So if their certifications have expiration dates, it would automatically enroll them in any trainings that they're required in order to keep that certification up to date. Everything would be centralized in one location, so supervisors, department heads, any certain designated users could be able to go in and access certifications, make sure that their employees have completed training, seeing what training is coming up so that they can make sure that that's communicated to their employees. Like I mentioned earlier, some real-time reporting. If we're doing our annual workers' compensation audit and they're onsite and they want to know what compliance training we do year after year, that's a really quick report that we can provide for that auditor rather than having to go back and forth between some paper rosters. So kind of continuing our current issues, tracking the training. Like I mentioned, we've got over 500 employees now, so making sure that everybody has completed their drug and alcohol training is getting more and more challenging. Our safety coordinator, John, developed a monthly training schedule, which is something that we haven't had rolled out before. What that allowed is for our department heads to say, okay, well, it's October, we need to do a safety training this month. What are we going to do? Well, so rather than them trying to think about what topic is available, they can just go to this calendar that he's provided and go through those trainings. But then the backside of that is that they've got to turn in a paper sign-in roster to John. He's got to make sure everybody completed it. And so that kind of creates a little bit of a manual workload. So having everything online would make it much more efficient and easier. One of the specific issues that we ran into was just due to basic employee turnover, we ended up only having one certified CPR instructor on the city's payroll. And that's a goal of ours is to have all of our employees certified as to be able to provide CPR and basic first aid. So since we threw turnover, had one person, we ended up falling behind on getting our employees certified in CPR. Having a system like LEARN would be able to help us track who our instructors are, if their certifications are lapsing, or if all of a sudden we are, you know, running into low numbers, hey, we need to get somebody certified as a CPR instructor. So it's able to provide some really specific resolutions in that way as well. Just a quick list of some other Alabama clients that they've got. We heard specifically from Coastal Alabama and all of their campuses, they've got, I think she said, 962 total users. And one of the benefits that she said is that they are able to really easily go back and look at past trainings. It's easy to use for all of their employees and their supervisors. And as a supervisor, she can go in and assign courses to the employees that she thinks would be beneficial to their professional development. So already having kind of a basic understanding within our supervisor group, since they're already using it as applicant tracking, would kind of establish that learning curve and let us know where, you know, where we are with that. So the cost, just like with-
I noticed you put cost at the end.
At the end. I'm going to sell you on it first. So just like with the original purchase with Insight, they asked for a two- or three-year subscription agreement. So we asked for the numbers on three years. We're looking at a total of $62,727.04 over the cost of three years. We were able to negotiate year one down to, it was originally somewhere north of $15,000 for year one. They brought it down to $11,965 and kept year two and year three the same. So they did not add any other increases in those two subsequent years. We did compare it with a couple of other different learning management systems. Some of them had more to offer, some of them had less. Of course, you know, that comes with different costs as well, but we felt confident with this decision to go with LEARN because we've already got the tie-in with the applicant tracking system, and we've already got users who are familiar with how the system functions. So we think that that learning curve would be pretty short and simple.
All right. So my first question would be, how happy have we been or are we with the original system that we bought under this NeoGov applicant tracking?
I think very happy. And you can ask the rest of them because they're the real customers at the end of the day. But I think we're getting higher-quality applicants, we're getting a more efficient hiring process. Because we're getting higher-quality applicants, we're able to capture more information on their applications as far as their qualifications, their experience, and they're probably able to make better hiring decisions than before.
From a technical standpoint, this system, IT guys, have you guys been happy with the way it works and functions? Counsel, any questions on this?
More concern, I guess. I'm glad they're happy. Is it worth the money? That's all I'm asking. You know?
I would say yes. I think, you know, watching, it's just been two short years here, but the amount of paperwork that comes through, just trying to keep up with basic compliance training, is overwhelming at times. And we kind of go through some of the workers' comp numbers at the personnel board meeting every month, but we're down, year over year to date, we're down, I think we've seen a decrease in about nine-and-a-half percent in workers' compensation claims paid out. We've also seen a decrease of 32%, 33% in incidents over the same timeframe. So I can already see that our communication and our buy-in from our supervisors into our safety program and what we're asking from a compliance standpoint is there. I think this would just make it more convenient for them to help stay on top of the training for the employees.
And is this $11,965 already in your budget for what we just passed?
Yes.
If I could also add, one feature of it that I think will be helpful is every employee who has an accident in the city, I meet with those employees to talk to them about the accident, talk to them about how it impacts our bottom line. You know, we've purchased a lot of equipment and vehicles over the past several years, making sure, you know, they're taking really good care of those. You know, we want to assign them classes to take, or training to take, depending on what accident they may have. I think this will be helpful in that, being able to assign that and track it because I can do that and tell the supervisor to do it, but I don't have any mechanism for going back and checking, or Hannah does it, other than just, you know, asking the question, did they do their, did they do their training? So, and I did talk to the folks from Coastal Alabama Community College because like you, I told Hannah, I said, the council's not going to like how much this costs. I said, they don't like, you know, software that escalates like this. They do find real value in it simply because they can track across their system. And again, as we have so many different departments and tracking that, tracking the training and everything and the safety training has, it's a lot of paper and spreadsheets and those kind of things. This will give us a one-stop clearinghouse for that plus the individual hiring process. So.
There's also opportunities for us to link in outside training. So if they go attend a course somewhere else, we can link that into the system and it can track it there. We can link it in with the industry-specific platforms. Gas has one that's specific to natural gas, law enforcement has one as well, so we can link it up and help track it.
Okay. Jimmy?
I mean, yeah, just, you know, percentage increases are pretty significant year over year, but if y'all think it's helping efficiency and saving money in the long haul by reducing accidents or just providing a more efficient process, then I'm fine with it. It's not that significant.
That's assuming for a minute, the second year we decide it's not worth it. Hung for all three years, or can you?
I think you could probably get out if there was enough justification, just like any contract. We're under the same terms that we were when we purchased Insight a couple of years ago, and I think y'all had that same question. If we don't like it, can we change it? And the answer was yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next, committee updates.
Catching me before my meetings, have a parking authority meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. Library Board meets next week at 4:00 p.m. on Monday. That's all.
Ben?
Actually, we had a harbor board meeting, but I was out of town, and Jack made it a little late, and he's not here. I guess, Ben, we have any issues or any problems?
No.
Harbor's still running smooth as hell. Running off you.
All right. And I don't have any, anything to offer at this point, so we'll just keep clicking. All right. Next, we have department ed updates. Take this time to come up here and we'll talk about your agenda items as well.
Good evening. I've got items nine through 14. A lot of these are beginning-of-the-year purchases for our water treatment. As it is, we put in the water for, number nine is Charis 8700. 10 is hydrated lime. Let's go with number 12 is lime slurry, that would be liquid lime. So those are just routine we do every year.
All right. Counsel questions about nine, 10, or 12? All right.
All right. Let's shoot for number 11. This is to award Weaver Directional Boring to do that 24-inch water main to connect the tanks from Walmart to the school. There were six bidders. It came in under budget, very competitive. Overall, it was a good turnout.
Six bidders about normal for these projects?
A project that size, yes.
If I could also add to that, if you don't mind, just on that project, Darrell and I have met about this several times, simply because this is going to be, it also coincides with that 16-inch line that we're putting down, 181 in Gayford. So there's going to be a lot of traffic to coordinate in that area. We've looked and reviewed traffic plans. We will be keeping traffic flowing with one lane, possibly on the weekends. There will be some detours because we won't be able to have a flagger out there, but we will have, we will keep traffic flowing. Again, just so people understand how important this is, again, it takes the 24-inch line that we put down Fairhope Avenue from Tower 2 to 1, right there by Fairhope Avenue Baptist Church, which allows us to push more water in the locations that we need it. You know, everybody hears about wells and water towers, but part of this whole process is also upsizing lines, so to make sure we can push water where it needs to go so everybody can anticipate some more road construction, unfortunately, or some more construction for infrastructure and some more traffic, you know, some traffic delays, but we are going to keep traffic flowing just as much as possible.
Counsel, any questions on number 11?
My one question on this is, looking through the bid evaluations, we've got two that are kind of down there in the similar space. It is one of the two that are down there. The rest are significantly higher. I'm just, have we used Weaver before?
We have not. So, you know, part of the package our engineering team does is they reference the company. If we haven't heard of them or worked with them before, they go do a reference check, and they turned out to be legit.
Okay.
I have one question.
The other thing I did want to mention is when you look at that bid tab, you see alternate two. That alternate two is for doing the boring at night. I did ask that anytime we do utility work that involves being on a roadway that we include night, we can work whenever possible to make sure we expedite those contracts.
Number 13, purchase water meters. This is just another housekeeping thing we do every year. I've had conversation with the mayor at length about how we're going with AMI, and we're going in a different direction with new, more accurate meters so we can accurately bill for the water that we're providing to the customer.
Counsel, any issues with accurately billing for water?
I'm here.
Okay. Number 14, this is a belt press for the wastewater treatment plant. This is kind of a new thing we want to do that I don't think has been done down there is we want to try to be a little bit more self-sufficient down there, have a little bit more control of the treatment process. So this is to rent, one, just to see how well it's going to work out, how, and we've got the personnel to do it now. We're almost fully staffed down there, so.
Counsel, in the past, you've approved contracts for sludge removal. This will take the place of that. Just so you know, we did budget some money for sludge removal this year, but we also budgeted this money so we could start doing this in-house. We have an employee who's experienced the sludge removal process and the contractors. It's gotten harder and harder to find somebody who's efficient and just, you know, it's very costly, somebody who, you know, meets our schedules. So a lot of places do it on their own, so we're going to try this. We opted to rent the equipment versus buying it so we can try it for a year and see how it works, and if not, we would go back to a contract.
Same disposal location and everything as if we were outsourcing it, or?
No. So we would be disposing at the county. So the county would come and pick it up, and I think with the treatment process that we're going to have more control over, it's ultimately going to result in less loads, a drier product, and all around cheaper.
Will that process, how will the impact be on the smell in the area? Will, is that going to have any difference?
Sludge is sludge.
But when you say less loads, longer, is it going to be sitting out there longer?
No. So the, our biggest problem with odor is the headworks, which is under construction right now. And once that is complete, that's going to significantly reduce the odor problem. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to discuss items 15, 16, and 17. 15 is a request to terminate the contract with Jay Payne Organization in reference to the project, the nature building, nature center building program. Just to, without getting into too much in-depth details of how we get to this point, because I know we've spent some time, the mayor has shared information and things of that nature. You know, this is just a case that the contract has ran well beyond its time. And just to kind of give you insight, knowledge of how things work, from the start of the project till the end, there was always regular, what we call OAC meetings, which is the owner, the architect, and the contractor. Originally, we met every two weeks. We got into the spring, we moved that up to once a week. At the result of every one of those meetings, the architect, the following day, would issue a, basically a listing of things that are still incomplete, not correct, still needs to be addressed, waiting on for things of that nature. And so all of that is all very, very, very well documented. As we got beyond the contract time, at that time, the mayor was much more involved because we need to keep her involved. And as we got down to the August time period, of course, we kept Marcus in the loop of everything that occurred and have gone through the process. Here's the good news is the reason we're a public entity and that we have all the requirements of bonding and things like that is that protects us in the long run. And ultimately, there's not a, I don't consider anything to be adversarial at this point in time. It's just we want to finish product, project, and we need it finished in a timeframe that we can at least plan on and things of that nature. So we've already taken the preemptive action to keep the surety abreast. They've already been very proactive in contacting us. We're actually meeting with the surety on this Friday to walk through, to kind of visualize all of the things that we have identified that need to be addressed, and hopefully they will bring in a party to help see that through in a pretty quick and efficient way. And then they would also have the right to request any unpaid funds to them for delivering a completed project. It's not something that you ever want to do. It's only the second time in a 21-year career that I've had to do this, but it is part of the contractual process, and we need your action to be able to kind of keep that process moving forward. And I'd be glad to answer any questions on that if there is any, so.
Counsel.
Number 16, 17 are a lot easier. Number 16 is we are requesting you to approve the mayor's selection of WAS Design to provide a proposal to design the new city park down next to Hope Community. And I'm using the word Hope Community Park, but I don't know what the official name is yet.
Foundation Park.
Foundation Park, okay. For Foundation Park, I'll make sure it's corrected in the next agenda item when we have the proposal from WAS Design. And then number 17, as you know, you authorized a selection of Mark B. Hammond, architect, to do the third, required third-party peer review for our safe room. And he did get that proposal back, and it's really a bargain at $7,000. Plus, remember, that's 90% reimbursed by FEMA. So I'd like for y'all to approve those two actions as well. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions on 16 or 17? Thank you, Richard.
All right. Good evening. I'm Peyton Rogers. Y'all may remember Hunter introduced me a couple of months ago. I'm the new planning and zoning manager for the planning department. I'm here on behalf of Hunter this evening, who's in the mountains this week for a much-needed vacation. Don't have any department updates, but we do have two items on the agenda that I just want to provide a little bit of background for, item number seven at least. This is a site plan review for Rock Creek Commercial. The approval itself was unanimous at the planning commission. There were some, it was, it ran concurrently with a subdivision MOP, and there were some concerns that were brought up at the meeting regarding traffic entering Rock Creek there at the main intersection, as well as some concerns about drainage exiting the onsite retention pond into Rock Creek. Those at this time, staff feel have been addressed. The planning commission asked that the applicant perform an additional traffic engineering review. Just looking at the ingress egress into Rock Creek, the applicant did that provided by Neil Schaefer. Essentially, it resulted in if there ends up being a traffic issue, the city can handle it by contacting ALDOT and maybe doing some things with the traffic signaling and striping, but the initial infrastructure there seems to be adequate with what's being proposed. Staff feels like that issue has been addressed. And then the only other condition that was added to that site plan review by the planning commission was regarding the velocity of stormwater exiting into Rock Creek. There is an onsite retention detention pond that's just not been maintained very well over the years. That should be addressed by the time of permit, just by the applicant going through the process of cleaning that out. I can answer any other questions you have about that, but most of it I feel like we can cover in my presentation. The only other item we have is item eight. It's just a resolution to accept public infrastructure, excuse me, public improvements for Rockwell Place. Nothing really special about this one. It does meet all our requirements and just begins the standard two-year maintenance period.
Counsel, you'll go through the specifics of that?
Yeah, I've got the specifics of the site plan with the slides later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have agenda item number 18, which is the GovDeals surplus items. Do you have any questions on that? Glad to try to answer them. If not, I also have agenda item number 20, which is for our fire extinguisher inspection renewal process we do every year. We put it out for bid and Safety Extinguishers LLC. Won the bid. Go ahead and answer any questions y'all have about that as well.
All right. Counsel, any questions for George on 18 or 20?
All right. Thank you.
IT's got item 21, just the yearly renewal of our Microsoft licensing. This includes email, Microsoft Office, Microsoft handles authentication for things like Munis. This is kind of an important one for us.
Jeff, it looks like this is, this is what would have just been in our 2026 budget?
Right. Yeah. It's budgeted 2026, just, yeah, just a yearly renewal of our licensing.
According to my book, anyway, it looks like we're almost three grand over budget. How'd we do that if it was something we just passed?
Yeah.
Just the numbers that we're estimating.
Right. Yeah, so we, there was, you know, there was an increase, I think, of about 10% this year, and we probably weren't expecting that. There was a 5% increase from Microsoft's side, then I think we had about close to a 5% increase of licensing over last year.
Hey, Counsel, any questions for Jeff on 21? All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff, it looks like this is, this is what would have just been in our 2026 budget?
Right, yeah. It's budgeted 2026, just, yeah, just a yearly renewal of our licensing.
According to my book, anyway, it looks like we're almost three grand over budget. How'd we do that if it was something we just passed?
Yeah. Right. Yeah, so we, there was, you know, there was an increase, I think, of about 10% this year, and we probably weren't expecting that. There was a 5% increase from Microsoft's side, then I think we had about, close to a 5% increase of licensing over last year.
Okay, counsel, any questions for Jeff on twenty-one? All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to let everybody know about the budget on, online. And so, we, y'all approved a contract with ClearGov this past year, and so, that's going to be the publishing of our budget. And so, don't be surprised that you go out there online, and you'll have a link that goes to ClearGov's website. But that will have the ability that you could be able to pull it up on your phone, so it would have a mobile view. It will have a PDF option. And then, if you're on your, on a laptop or your computer, there would be a view for it. So, they made it in three different views, and it's where we'll be ADA compliance for being able to see the budget. So, that would put us in compliance with that. So, I wanted to give that update for citizens that may be watching, that would be able to see that a little bit different than what our budgets have been in the past. Mayor, do you want me to go over that last agenda that's with the consultant that has your name, or you got that? Okay, okay, that's it.
Good evening. I guess I can cover agenda item number twenty-two, that kind of umbrellas all utilities, because we'll all use this. This is our 811 ticket management software that we use, Cortera, we've been using them for several years. This is, but is a budgeted item through our department, and we will utilize this for a mapping. Basically, what our guys are doing now is, they're having to go through and cherry pick these locates based on the verbiage now they can go through, and this will map them, so that, they're using it for route building, so that they can start, like, our system's real linear. So, you think, like, he may go to one in Spanish fort, and then, something happened and Daphne had to go to that. This is, this is a mapping program within Cortera to work, so that he can plan his day out logistically, according to the geographical locations of these 811 locate tickets.
And that works across all utilities?
It does, yeah. We'll use it for water, sewer, electric, and gas. And we've met with all the department heads to make sure that they were comfortable with it, it was something that they were, they were comfortable with, so.
All right, counsel, any questions on number twenty-one?
That's item number twenty-two.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And it's over budget by a hundred bucks? Oh, for two.
Dang, sorry. Then I'll give you a quick rundown on phase two of Cast Iron, it's progressing on pace and on budget. We are moving through that pretty quickly. Everything seems to be going relatively well. Crews are minimizing closures of roads, actually, we haven't had to close a road yet for that project yet. So, one sidewalk, yeah, find some wood, one sidewalk at night for about a two hours, so, other than that, no.
You guys are doing a great job with that.
Progress is going pretty well. Anything else for the gas department?
Counsel, any additional questions for Wes?
Cool, thanks.
No, sir.
I'm going to do a couple items myself. One is number, number six, which is to approve the resolutions and requests for the physical year 2025, 26 appropriations and in-kind donations. That is a consent agenda, so there's a whole laundry list of organizations that are represented in that consent agenda. Everyone from the Film Festival to, trying to think of all of them, Lisa, Film Festival, Baldwin Pops, anybody that we give contributions to, the Eastern Shore Art Center, the Rotary Youth Club, all those groups that we give contributions to every, every year, the Downtown Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce, FEE.
Not FEE, no.
Booster Club.
Booster Club, yeah. Well, it's, it's actually for in-kind services, basically for golf, would be for FEE from the Booster Club, and I believe the fire department's in there this year also. But all those appropriations are in there, it is a consent agenda, it's about a $280,000 budget item that's represented in that agenda item. And this is something that y'all have already approved in the budget, but as you know, we have to do contracts with each of these organizations, so in turn, they give us something back for the contribution that we're giving them. The other, the other agenda item I'll comment on is number nineteen. That is to award to Blast Soccer Club, the Fairhope Soccer Club, for lease the Fairhope Soccer Concession Stand. We have been doing this for several years now, where they have to lease that concession stand back to us to be able to sell concessions from there, because they run that and they do get the proceeds from it. So, again, that is just to award that bid. The other one that I will go over is number twenty-three. That is to execute a three-year agreement with Maynard Nexum, that is a consultant that we use. When we looked at the contract, there was going to be an escalator, so they said if we did a three-year contract, we would not have that escalator in our contract, so we opted for the three-year contract. We will budget every year for, for that year, that current year, but this will be just a three-year contract to be able to lock in that price.
Counsel, any questions for the mayor on these, these items?
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
I don't know who this is. Who is this?
That is not mine.
Wes? Fisher?
Fisher? No. I have item number five, which is the second reading final resolution for the building permit fee update. I know we've covered it in the work session, we had the initial reading, so if you have any questions, happy to answer, I didn't figure you did.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. Think that is it. Anybody else got anything, department heads? Nope. All right, we will end the work session then, and plan on starting the, can we get, Dr. Henkens here? Collins, if you can get here a little earlier, maybe we'll start back around 5:30? And if he, all right, we'll plan on starting back at 5:30 with the regular scheduled council meeting.
Dr. Hankins, thank you for getting here quickly. I had told the Assistant Clerk that we would probably be through with the work session no sooner than 5:45 and, of course, I couldn't be here for the work session, so Jay ran through it in about three seconds maybe, so good job, Jay.
All right. With that, I'll ask everybody to please rise for tonight's invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Dr. Eric Hankins with First Baptist Church of Fairhope. I think it's Fairhope first, right?
Either way.
It's Fairhope first, First Baptist Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Lord, at the times and seasons, as the weather cools and October gives way to November, I'm reminded of the approach of Thanksgiving and the call to be grateful. Your Word tells us that our gratitude must have the proper altitude, amplitude, and attitude, so it is to You, above all, that we give our ultimate thanks for Your mercy, provision, and direction. We are grateful for all of the circumstances and all the people that You have allowed into our lives that have either blessed us or challenged us or both, and we thank You for the power and the wisdom to receive all those gracious gifts, even and especially those things and people who are hard to accept. This evening, we're grateful for a world that is a little more peaceful tonight, and we pray for those in the Middle East who must begin the work of putting back together all that has been shattered. We're grateful for our country, this place where we can pray and live and work in freedom. We're grateful for and pray for all those in uniform who stand watch over that freedom. Help us not to take them or it for granted. We're grateful for this city of ours and those that assemble here this evening to steward and care for it. Thank You for these leaders who sacrificed their time and energy in directing us to what is true and good and beautiful for our life together. Guide them as they guide us. For all these things and many more, we give thanks. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hankins. Okay. First item on tonight's agenda will be to approve the minutes of the work session in regular City Council meeting held on September 22. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes, Council?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, those minutes are approved. Thank you, Council. Mayor, your report, please.
Thank you, Council. Is there anybody here tonight representing the awareness for domestic violence? They may or may not come in during the meeting. I'm not sure if anybody was coming, but I wanted to go ahead and read this proclamation. This is proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Fairhope, and it says, "Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime and safety issue that affects individuals and families throughout Alabama, and whereas domestic violence impacts people of all ages, races, and socioeconomic backgrounds causing physical, emotional, and psychological harm, and whereas in the United States, an estimated one in three Americans will witness an incident domestic violence during their lifetime, and children who grow up in a home with domestic violence are at higher risk for being abused and neglected. Whereas Fairhope, Alabama recognizes the importance of raising awareness about domestic violence, supporting survivors, and promoting prevention efforts to create a safer and healthier community. Whereas we are committed to fostering a community that stands against violence, promotes safety, and supports survivors through education, collaborations, and access to resources, because we know only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this Hankins crime. Whereas October 2025 is nationally recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to educate the public and encourage action to end domestic violence. So now therefore I, Sherri Sullivan, as Mayor of the city of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Fairhope. I call upon all residents, businesses, and organizations to join in raising awareness, supporting survivors, and working together to prevent domestic violence in our community." Thank you. I know that the Police Department is probably the department that works most often with victims of domestic violence, so again, this is something that I'm sure is near and dear to their heart. Anything that we can do to prevent domestic violence and to bring awareness to it is really important. For my report tonight, Rebecca Byrne with the Community Foundation of Point Clear in South Alabama was going to be here. I may recognize her at the end if she comes in. She was going to be here tonight in recognition of Foundation Park, which is the park that we are going to be building at Hope Community. It will encompass a splash pad and a park and a walking trail. We are doing that in partnership with them, also with collaboration with the Hope Community. So she will be here probably at the end of the meeting to do a check presentation. On the agenda tonight, you will see that we are selecting W.A.S. out of Foley, Chad Watkins, to do the design for that park. They have been working with them on some conceptuals, and this will just be for us to expend those funds as they're donated to be able to design that park. The other thing I wanted to mention is also on the agenda tonight, there's some information on purchasing chemicals for our water system. One thing that I want to work on hopefully this year, but certainly over the next four years, is to remove fluoride from our water system. I've been talking to other water providers throughout the state of Alabama, and there are a lot of systems or several systems removing it from their water, and so have a lot of information on that. We'll be evaluating that and also hoping working with the local Dennis community to discuss that and hopefully bring that back before the Council. The other thing we talked about in the work session, there's several projects on here, the 24-inch water line specifically. There are several water projects that'll be going on in that area, Fairhope Avenue, 181 and Gaffer. We have been meeting a lot about the traffic patterns there and how that will impact traffic, so just know that as we do these projects, we are continuing to look at traffic patterns to make sure we have the least impact possible on people's travel time. Have talked with the school, we'll be providing maps to them and talking to them. This will be about a six- to eight-month project combined with both of these, depending on weather and stuff, so again, just know that we look at those traffic patterns, we try to have the least impact we can, and that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and obviously we'll yield to you if you need to recognize those people when they arrive, because we did get started early. Thank you. All right, public participation for agenda items. If you would like to address the Council, for items five through 24, you can come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We'll give you three minutes to address the Council, and if there's anything that's not on tonight's agenda, if you will wait till the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we'll give you an opportunity to address the Council then.
Good evening. Rebecca Tipford, 553 Marsham Drive. Many people don't really keep up with the news, but a lot of people watch 60 Minutes, and I noticed that 60 Minutes this week talked about the infiltration of foreign entities into utility grids around the country. They've been in the grids for five years, so it's not news, but I think now they're identifying the country that's perpetrating that, and I was just going to ask Wes and Jeff and others who talk about the upgrades that Fairhope does. So I think meticulously to our computer systems, especially in the utilities departments and everything, is Fairhope protected from that? Because I know they mentioned Littleton, Massachusetts, which is a very small little town up in the Northeast, and theirs has been hacked. They're in that system, they're in big city systems, but I kind of take comfort in thinking that what we're doing protects our community. Maybe we need to discuss that further. I don't expect an answer.
I will address that with you. One thing we don't do is we don't discuss that publicly because we don't want to tell the criminals what we're doing to protect our system. So we go into executive session, and we do talk about ways to protect our utilities. In fact, I was late for this meeting because I was with Energy Southeast, which is where we buy our utilities, and that was a topic of discussion, was cybersecurity, and they cite some examples. The actors are getting very good at what they're doing, and I won't give an example now because I don't want to educate anybody who may do us harm, but we do look at those case studies, and we do simulator attacks on our own system to make sure. Now, can I tell you that we're 100% protected? I don't know. There may be ways, they're sophisticated, there's a lot of these, sometimes perpetrators are even done by state-sponsored groups that have almost unlimited resources, so we have to be mindful of that.
Well, thank you for sharing that. I kind of picked up from the reportage on 60 Minutes that maybe some cities are not investing in the updates and the patches and, you know, the Microsoft new programs that our city is, and I wanted to assume that that gave us extra protection, so thank you for that reassurance, and thank you, Jay.
Yeah, something that we try not to advertise, but it's a fair question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Council comments. Councilman Conyers?
Just only two comments I have.
Councilman Robinson?
No comment.
Councilman Boone?
No comment.
Okay, there will be an Airport Authority meeting at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow in council chambers, and Rec Board meeting at 5:15 p.m. at the Rec Center on Wednesday afternoon. So I don't have any committee reports to, other than AMEA strategic planning session going on today and tomorrow morning. Any other comments, counsel? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which is final adoption of an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1586, ordinance number 1599, and ordinance number 1804, the schedule of fees for construction and building permits. This was introduced at the September 22 regular city council meeting. Counsel, you can see that on pages 87 to 92 in your book. I know that you covered this in the work session, and this is the second read. Do you have any questions or any clarifications from Eric? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
Removed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number six tonight is a consent agenda. This is to approve the resolutions and requests for the FY 2025 to 2026 appropriations and in-kind donations, and to authorize Mayor Sullivan to execute the contracts for the same. I'll just mention that this totals $279,100 listed on pages 102 to 140 of your council book. That includes 19 items that are funded this year through our appropriations. I just also want to make note that the funding for the appropriations and in-kind donations, they were approved in the budget, and this just allows the mayor to execute the contracts for all of these. And there should have been no surprises in this year's budget for that, pretty much all the same. I think there was one new one for maybe $2,500.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven is a site plan review and approval at the request of the applicant on behalf of the owner, Avrend LLC, for site plan approval of Rock Creek Commercial. The property is approximately 2.23 acres and is owned to PUD. The property is located on Rock Creek Parkway east of US 98. The planning commission unanimously recommends approval of SR 25.04. Peyton?
Yes, sir. Good evening. As you mentioned, this is a site plan review for Rock Creek Commercial. Property itself is located east of intersection 98, Rock Creek Parkway, and is owned to PUD, Planned Unit Development. This PUD was approved in the 90s, and various subdivisions and re-subdivisions have occurred since. The last revision that affected the property resulted in the existing bank building being built on Lot 1 of the lots you see here to the left of Lot 1's highlighted in yellow. One thing I will call to your attention, there are currently three parcels that are reflected. The two parcels that are mostly rectangular on the left of the site will be combined into one parcel as a condition of approval if everything goes through. On the screen is a proposed site plan. This is a 20,000-square-foot building with four units total. One 10,000-square-foot unit is on the second floor. We have three additional units on the bottom floor. The exterior elevations are going to be a brick with the second-floor balconies. And the topography of the site is such that it does allow for some parking underneath the proposed building, which the applicant plans to take advantage of. The northeast corner of this site does contain some wetlands, which is being left alone as it slopes into, or back towards, Rock Creek. And an enlargement of the landscape plan better show some proposed pedestrian connectivity of a bridge or set of stairs that will go from Rock Creek Parkway to the site. No additional curb cuts are going to be required or needed for this site. It's going to utilize the existing shared drive that the bank has access to at this This is just the history that kind of spoke about at the top. Ultimately, this project did go through the normal site plan review process for review of many different items, and we're satisfied with those. It complies with all the standards of the zoning ordinance, building, landscaping, all the utilities had a chance to review everything. No upgrades are needed for this request. Ultimately, everything was compliant. The wetlands, as I mentioned, was one point of issue at the planning commission meeting. The site plan they provided illustrated the required wetland buffer signage on the wetland lines that was delineated by the wetland delineation. These are going to have to be revised to reflect the signs being located on the buffer line, something the applicant has already agreed to do and is in the process of revising to get those provisions into us. There was a couple of concerns that came up with the planning commission. This case went before planning commission concurrently with an MOP subdivision for the same site. The primary concerns that were brought up were that of traffic and drainage into Rock Creek. Primarily, the concerns centered around increase of traffic going into Rock Creek. This was essentially discussed, and the commission saw fit to add a condition to the approval of the MOP that required the applicant to get additional traffic engineering reviews performed prior to us bringing the site plan to the council. Applicant did this, they contracted Neil Schaefer, provided another review, and that was included in the packet for the agenda tonight in general. Their recommendation was that if additional traffic becomes a recurring problem, ALDOT should be able to address this if contacted by potentially just adjusting signal timings at that light, or possibly restriping. There are several restriping options that could further reduce traffic loads going in and out of Rock Creek. They also felt this was addressed by the fact the site has multiple entrances off of Rock Creek Parkway, as well as one further north on 98. The second issue the planning commission brought up was regarding the velocity of stormwater exiting the detention pond into Rock Creek. If you were to drive by that pond today, you wouldn't be able to tell it was there. It's so overgrown, it just looks like a forest. This is something the applicant has addressed or is planning to address. They're going to provide a letter certifying that detention pond meets all of our requirements. They just got to clean it out first. This is something staff believes can be handled at time of permit, and are satisfied with both of these items having been addressed at this time. Ultimately, the staff recommended the planning commission approval of case SR 2504, and the planning commission recommends to the city council approval of the case as well, with the three conditions you see on the screen that were included in the packet. They're going to have to perform an administrative replat to combine those two properties together, as well as revise the site plan to reflect the wetland buffer signage that I mentioned. And item number three has already been addressed by the approval of the MOP by the planning commission. That is ultimately all I have on this case. Staff is obviously available if you have any questions.
So back to the one on the runoff from the retention pond, yeah. Number two, you said they will. Do you recommend that we say, subject to that being provided? Because you said it's in the works, but it hasn't been, the letter hasn't been provided yet.
Correct, yeah. And you could certainly do that. It's something they have already said they were going to do, but it couldn't hurt to put it in as a condition. Yes, sir.
Counsel, I recommend we put that in as a condition, that the letter be received. So that's one of the conditions.
I will say, it was a required condition of the MOP to the planning commission, so it should already be addressed before they'll be able to get any permits. But it wouldn't hurt to add it to this one as well, if you see off the softet.
Any questions for staff?
I think my only concern would be that runoff and the risk to Rock Creek, because I know it doesn't take a ton of rain to have that get really muddy and messy in there. And I know it's a close area, but I mean, I don't have any reason to believe they won't do everything in their power to prevent that from happening. But yeah, I think just making sure that that detention pond is cleaned out and prepped in advance of them starting all the site work.
Yes, sir.
So this is, so it's a commercial MOP, and there's nothing in this zoning that allows that to become residential, right?
No, sir. The property itself is going to be utilized for commercial uses, yes, sir.
That's clear, right?
Yeah, that's already been approved by part of the PUD.
Pretty good-sized building, the proposal there.
Okay. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion for site plan approval. I would say, subject to the recommendations of the staff and planning commission, and also subject to receiving that, the letter that was on the previous, if you go back a screen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And also receiving the letter certifying the detention pond meets the necessary standards once it's been cleaned out.
I recommend approval as presented, then.
Got that, clerk? All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, sir. All right, number eight is a resolution to public improvements indicated herein for Rockwell Place are hereby accepted for public maintenance subject to the bond posted and authorize the mayor to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Rockwell LLC. Routine.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of KERS 8700 Corrosion Inhibitor Water Treatment Chemical as a sole source procurement from distributor Alberti and Blakeney LLC for an estimated annual amount of $360,000 based on the option by the Code of Alabama.
Make a motion, will you approve as presented?
Second.
A motion and a second. We purchase this about every year. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 10 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of hydrated lime chlorine hydrofluosilic acid or fluoride, let's just call it fluoride, in A Zone 15 from Hawkins Incorporated for the Water Department and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, with an estimated annual cost for these chemicals of $200,000. Mayor, did you want to make a comment on that at all? You spoke to me before a meeting at all about the fluorine.
I can. I just, I said before the meeting, or in my comments, that, you know, one of the things I'm going to be evaluating this year is possible removal of fluoride from our water system. We spend anywhere between $80,000 and $100,000 a year on fluoride. It's one of those things, it's not great for our employees to handle that, and there are several systems throughout the state that are removing it. So again, going to be evaluating that, hopefully working with the local Dennis community to look at that and possibly remove it.
All right, counsel, do we have a motion and a second?
No, you do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the procurement.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 11 is to award a bid to Weaver Directional Boring Incorporated for Fairhope Avenue's 24-inch water transmission main with a bid proposing not to exceed $3,373,186.80. I believe Darryl covered this in the work session. This is not a surprise, this has been put into our budget, so.
Make a motion to approve?
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? One and a quarter miles. Hearing no other discussion, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 12 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the Cal Flow Lime Slurry for Water Treatment as a sole source procurement from Burnett Lime Company, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama with an estimated annual cost of $50,000. Intertain a motion for this procurement?
Removed.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? These are budgeted items, by the way. Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 13 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to approve the procurement of Census High Pearl Water Meters, Census FlexNet Easy Link Mobile Reading Devices, and Census Flex Read Software from Core &amp; Main as a sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama with an annual cost not to exceed $500,000.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Once again, this is just money that we budget to purchase water meters and these other items related to those every year, so. Hearing no other discussion, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution to award a bid to Merrill Brothers for trailer-mounted belt press equipment rental for the Fairhope wastewater treatment plant with a bid proposal not to exceed $389,750 for 10 months in FY 2026, and a cost of $64,958.34 coming from FY 2027 budgets, a total of 12 months of rental of this press. Any discussion? Any questions for Darryl? I think we're going to try this out and see how it goes, and if so, maybe purchase one of these presses, but as is, saving about $300,000 this year.
Make a question to approve as submitted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you, counsel. All right, item 15 is a resolution, the city council authorizes the city engineer to send a 30-day notice to terminate the contract with Jay Payne Organization LLC pursuant to Section 6, termination of agreement. A termination for default, which allows after 30 days for the city to terminate the contract and authorizes the mayor to make a claim against the surety or calling the bond to intercede to complete the project per the contract terms, conditions, plans, and specifications. And I believe Mr. Johnson covered this in detail in the work session, correct?
Yes.
Any questions about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to send the notice?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. A little bit of a change here. 16, just a little words the mayor wrote in. The city council approves the selection by Mayor Sullivan for professional landscape architect services for Foundation Park, Phase 1, not Hope Community Park. Foundation Park, Phase 1, to W.A.S. design, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is Ms. Byrne here yet?
She is.
You want to recognize her now?
Do you mind?
Please do. We got started early, Rebecca, sorry. But we want to recognize you now. Y'all want to vote on this while she's coming up? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. After approval, it's all yours.
I mentioned this in the work session, but, you know, the Community Foundation of Point Clear in South Alabama is a partner with us in Foundation Park, which is located at Hope Community, right there at Twin Beach and Section Street. It's going to be a park that's going to consist of playground equipment, splash pad, you know, seating areas, a walking track, and it's going to be a great partnership. We're looking forward to it and appreciate Rebecca and her team coming to us with this idea and wanting to invest in our community.
It's great to be here, and we're here to help kickstart the project, and I'm so delighted to hear that you have approved to move forward with it. So as part of our commitment with our partnership is to provide at least $100,000 before the end of the year. So your first installment is $50,000 here this evening, and we'll bring the rest of it before the end of the year. And by the way, I just want to share with you, we have begun fundraising for it and are getting some incredible commitments and pledges, and we'll provide you with an update a little bit later on, but things are going very well, and we are delighted with the partnership we have for the city. It's going to be so exciting, so thank you.
Fantastic, yeah, thank you. Photos, Mayor? You want to get some photos? Why break out a cell phone? Why break out a cellphone? He looks like a photographer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay. Item number 17 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Mark B. Hammond, Architect for Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for a third peer review of design by Adams and Stewart for 2022 PWI 004 HMGP safe room with or not to exceed amount of $7,000. So, I like those third peer reviews. I'll entertain a motion to fund it.
So moved, second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Who is building that? I can't remember. Did we already set the contractor on that?
Who was that, Richard? Who's the contractor on that? Did you see on that?
No, it goes out to bid.
Okay, so this is.
End of this month, but one of the things we have to do, the architecture firm that's doing the design is Stewart and Adams. FEMA requires us to have a third-party peer.
FEMA likes that third-party.
Yeah, got it. Going out to bid in November.
You'll be seeing it open bid or December.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, very good. And that's going to be on Pecan Avenue?
Yes, at the, basically between department lot at Pecan and where the Mardi Gras Barnes and Road is.
Right, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, very good. All right, I believe we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 18 is a resolution, certain items are declared surplus, and the mayor and city treasurer hereby authorize and are directed to dispose of the personal property owned by the City of Fairhope via gov deals. You'll see those listed in between pages 226 and 230 of your book. Somebody have any questions about those?
Make a motion, we approve the excess property and put it on gov deals.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Check out gov deals to look for these vehicles to come up in one trailer. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 19 is a resolution to award a bid to Blast Soccer Club Incorporated doing business as Fairhope Soccer Club for the lease of the Fairhope Soccer Concession Stand with a lease proposal of $417 per month. Believe they did put a service bid out on this, and they received one responsible bid.
Make a motion, will you approve as presented?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, none? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 20 is a resolution to award a bid to Safety Extinguisher for Fire Extinguisher Inspection Services Annual Contract with an annual contract amount not to exceed $50,000. That's a budgeted item.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual renewal of the Microsoft 365 licenses that is on Omni Partners contract with SHI International and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total not to exceed, we're going to say total not to exceed 93,146.36. I spoke to Jeff at the break, and actually, that the budget number that was in there showing only 90,161 and showing us over by 2985, that number had been revised to show the correct number. So, Jeff wanted me to know that he's $800 under budget.
Blimey the book, Jeff.
Just the book, just the book. All right, yeah, and I think that it was revised, and it was revised prior to us passing the budget, so it was slightly under. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Jeff, that 93,146 not to exceed will cover that, correct? Okay. All right, now I lost my sense. Do we have a motion in a second yet?
No, you do not.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to purchase.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, none? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 22 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual subscription for Cortera Services from Cortera Incorporated with a one-time setup fee of $750, an annual service fee of $7,350, and additional overage rate of 25 cents per ticket, and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute the contract. And this is for 811 line locating for all of our utilities, so. I missed it. Wes, I assume you convinced them all that this was a great idea, right?
By slim margin.
By slim margin? Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion for the procurement.
So moved, second.
Now, we have a motion in a second. I noticed Kevin's making a lot of motions. I guess he's kind of getting, you know.
Get him in.
He's got to get him in, huh? Making up, making up for the last 13 years.
Not a week, not two weeks.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Thank you, Kevin. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries.
Sorry, I hear you're missing.
I hear you. We will. Item number 23 is a resolution, the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sullivan to execute a three-year agreement with Maynard-Nexon PC from October 2025 to September 2028 with a retainer fee of $8,500 per month plus reimbursed monthly for all reasonable travel and other meeting-related expenses incurred in the performances of services under the agreement. I think that, I wasn't here in the work session, but maybe one of you said it, but this has been a great return on investment for this city, bringing in literally millions of dollars in grant money, just to name a few things. So, I'll entertain a motion to allow the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, none? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Item 24 is a request that Fairhope East K6 Parent Teacher Corporation, in collaboration with the Fairhope West Parent Teacher Partnership and Jerry Larry Newton Parent Teacher Organization, are requesting permission to close the streets in downtown Fairhope on Saturday, February 28, 2026, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the 11th Annual The Pirate Dash, and request electricity at the starting ending point of the race on the bluff with barricades at major road intersections to protect the runners. The Pirate Dash will begin and end at the same location on Magnolia Avenue on the bluff at Henry George Park. Chief, any reason we should not approve this? Everything in order? Okay. Kevin, would you make a motion?
I sure will. I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow the request. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing, none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. All right, public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you come to the podium and state your name and address, we'll give you three minutes. Mayor, you got one more to finish?
I do. The lady here is here with the domestic violence awareness, and just wanted to bring her up. And I read the proclamation at the beginning of the meeting, but again, this is in, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and just promoting that to be able to let people know how much domestic violence affects our community. And, you know, people who grow up in homes with domestic violence are at higher risk of being abused and neglected, and just want to do everything we can to bring awareness and support those survivors, and especially law enforcement who has to deal with it and all the professionals who have to deal with domestic violence.
Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to you, Mayor, and the council for your continued support. This is more than just a piece of paper. It's a beacon of hope to survivors. Again, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We're going to step right out and get a photo, and again, I want to thank the chief and her staff for all they do. They're the ones that deal directly with this almost every day, I'm sure, and we see those police reports, we see how much they deal with domestic violence, and just appreciate them and what they do. Thank you.
Hey, we still have public participation, people.
I'm it. Hello, I'm Catherine King. I'm here tonight to offer some additional information about the naming of the Bancroft Corner Project. And this, I know that there's a temporary name for it, but I'd also like to mention that the City of Fairhope had three cooperatives back in the 1920s, and one of them was the Farmers Cooperative, right smack dab on that corner from 1922 to 1925. And then 1926, Mr. Adolf Burgland brought forth, brought his creamery up from the beach, where it had been since 1908, up to that corner. So, that was really a, what I kind of think of as a creamery corner, and offer that as an alternative name as you make your decision to name that corner. Mr. Burgland served as mayor from 1914 to 1916. He was a wonderful businessman and entrepreneur. He really did a lot for the dairy business in this, in the southern part of the United, of the state of Alabama, in teaching the farmers how to raise a herd that would provide a stable income, ship your cream and your milk up to Burgland's Dairy or whatever Burgland's production or whatever other production plant there might be, and you'd have a stable income. He did a lot for the City of Fairhope. So, I just wanted to mention that there were actual buildings on that site from, starting in 1922, and that was taken down, I believe, in maybe '87, the building was, when the parking lot went in.
When he moved their creamery up from, or the, it was the creamer, he moved up from the pure area, right?
Uh-huh, yep.
To that corner. How long did it remain in business at that corner?
Until 61. Yeah, and then Barber's bought it.
Like '22 to '61.
Yeah, uh-huh, and then Barber's Dairy or subsidiary of Barber's Dairy bought it